I called the Tuesday, February 22nd, or 26th, 2019 regular council meeting to order. And we'll have an invocation by Father Grant Stokes of Trinity Episcopal Church. And I'll ask my colleagues who are in council to stand for the invocation. And then after the invocation, Councilman Bill Moody will lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance. Father Stokes.
Almighty God, we pray for those who take counsel this evening for the welfare of this city. We pray for you to send down upon them the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all in Portsmouth. Continue in them the fellowship, camaraderie, and community spirit enkindled among them at this past weekend's joint council and school board retreat. May your Spirit be among them to lead us to ever greater things for this city and community, and be among them tonight in your wisdom as they make historic decisions about the waterfront of our city, and guide them as they make decisions to bring government closer to its citizens. May all that is said and done here tonight be just and fair to all in our community. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Well, now I'll have a roll call, electronic. Please indicate your presence by hitting the yes button. And Madam Clerk, what is the result of the roll call? We have a quorum.
Yes, sir, we have a quorum.
Okay. Next is special presentations. And Madam Clerk.
Minutes.
Oh, the minutes. We do have the minutes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of February the 11th, 2019, the minutes of a call meeting of February 12th, 2019, and the minutes of a regular meeting, February 12th, 2019. We'll consider all three sets of minutes.
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion to approve these minutes. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Our next item is presentations. And Madam Clerk? Our -- Madam City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, we would like to introduce, and we will meet -- council will meet the newest family member. If you could bring Duke forward, please. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, you all can go down now as I read, please. Duke is the newest addition to the Portsmouth K-9 unit. Duke is a purebred bloodhound born September 14th, 2018, and became part of Portsmouth K-9 unit in November of 2018. Bloodhounds were bred for tracking, trailing, and Duke has an instinct to follow wind-borne odors. Bloodhounds are typically gentle, friendly, and family-oriented dogs. After roughly four months of training, Duke will be certified and ready to hit the streets. He will be an asset to the department by helping to locate endangered persons, to include children and the elderly who have gone missing. Because of his friendly nature, Duke can also interact with the community in hopes of strengthening the relationships between the citizens of Portsmouth and the police. Duke will also be an asset in criminal apprehension as well. We will train to locate sent articles at crime scenes, which can lead to routes of travel, escape, and in some cases, to the suspect. Duke is now a little over five months old and currently weighs 37 pounds. It is estimated that he will grow to become between 80 and 100 pounds. Ladies and gentlemen, let's welcome Duke.
The next is a recognition of foster parents who do this work through our Department of Social Services. And starting last year, we set the goal to recognize each foster family in Portsmouth over the course of this year. Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, we are going to ask Mrs. Pamela Littlehill to come forward and each introduce our foster care parents for the month of February.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce to you three awesome families. As I call your name, please come forward with your family. Mr. and Mrs. Melvin Lent. Mr. and Mrs. Lent have been fostering children since 2012. They have fostered a total of 10 children. They have adopted two children, Malachi and Terrence. Mr. and Mrs. Lent decided to become foster parents due to their mutual love for children. They understand that a child's transitioning into foster care was a difficult process, and they wanted to be able to provide those children with a system of support and a place of love and stability. Mr. and Mrs. Lent reported that fostering has been a learning process for them and has helped them in their own development and personal growth. The Lents understand that the importance of the family and relationships -- the Lents understood the importance of family and relationships and wanted to make sure that the children that they adopted maintained a supportive and healthy relationship with their biological families. And as a result, Mr. and Mrs. Lent continue to support ongoing communication and contact with the biological family. Mr. and Mrs. Lent have enjoyed and feel accomplished in observing the children settling into their family life, getting over each of their individual hurdles, and ultimately making their own family complete. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we want to give you a token of our sincere appreciation for what you do to make our families in Portsmouth so much stronger. And who should I give this to? And we'd like for you to --
Hi.
Say hi. Can you say hi?
Hi.
Thank you again.
Ms. Owens began fostering in 2013 and has fostered over 30 children, including providing respite for children in need. Ms. Owens adopted her son Ryan in 2018. Ms. Owens learned about fostering children when she had a child attending her own in-home daycare and noticed that the child was in foster care. Ms. Owens states that she was encouraged by the child's social worker to look into becoming a foster parent because the children enjoyed Ms. Owens' home and the love she had for children. Ms. Owens says that she loves children and she wanted to provide a safe and nurturing environment for Ryan. It's important to her that Ryan feels comfortable and loved in her home, and she is committed to always looking out for his best interests.
Thank you so much. And you can tell the love here. And again, a token of our sincere appreciation for you and your family.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Sims has adopted Jeremiah, Elijah, and Joshua. Ms. Sims began fostering children in 2013 and has fostered over 30 children, including providing respite for those children in need. Ms. Sims reports that she became a foster parent due to her love for children, especially children with special needs. Ms. Sims states that she values her relationship with her support parents who also assist her and also love and teach the children trusted in her care. Ms. Sims has assisted the children in her care with overcoming large obstacles, both medically and behaviorally. Ms. Sims believes that every child enjoys a loving family, and she also understands that each child has their own individual strengths as well as challenges. She is especially proud of the children she has adopted with overcoming their own unique hurdles. Ms. Sims states that the children have changed her and made a difference in her life.
Oh, my goodness. And as a token of our appreciation for this great family, we want to say thank you. And who should I give this to?
The big one.
Oh, nice. Yeah.
Ms. Dan, she has been in our life the whole way, well, with the boys. And when I first got them, they had a lot of needs, and she was there. Michael Boykins, Oliver Williams, Renee Riddick. I didn't do it all by myself. I have a team, so, yes.
It takes a village.
Yes, it does.
And thank you.
Madam Clerk, our next item is item 1972. Would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Motion: Adopting the City Council's Newly Revised Vision and Guiding Principles for the Future of the City of Portsmouth. Electronic roll call.
So that we can consider this matter as a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? We have a motion to adopt that's been duly seconded. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the vision principles that the City Council officially, formally adopted tonight, but actually composed at its retreat this month, earlier this month. And we have adopted the resolution, but we're going to sign this and make a commitment to live by these principles. So if my colleagues would join me at the table. I think it would be appropriate if I held this up and asked the clerk to read it so that -- and then after it's been read, Dr. Patton, would you make sure that it's distributed widely throughout the city?
City of Portsmouth Vision Principles. Portsmouth, Virginia, a city which celebrates the history while embracing its future, a prosperous port city which builds on its assets, its strategic geographic location, its waterways, its rich diversity, its sense of place to create economic opportunity for all of its citizens, a lifelong learning city which fosters education in its broadest sense, a safe, friendly city which values, respects, and protects all of its citizens, visitors, neighborhoods, and businesses. Guiding principles: A compact of leadership. Focus on respectful communication. Speak with one voice. Share information. No surprises. Lead by example. Commit to teamwork. Zero tolerance for disrespect.
Thank you so much. But thank you to my colleagues on City Council. This is council's vision for the future. And these are the guiding principles that we have made a solemn compact to each other that we're going to work to these principles. Again, Dr. Patton, if you'll make sure that these are distributed and displayed.
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Pace will begin to have them copied, and they will hang in every hall and every office across the city.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who observes this basic rule of decorum -- who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item on the agenda of public hearings, we have two. On public hearings, you need not have to have signed up prior to the meeting to speak. I will call those persons who have signed up, though, first, and then invite anybody that wants to speak at the public hearing. When you come to the lectern, if you would state your name and your address so that we have that for the record. Our first public hearing, Madam Clerk, would you read it, please?
Yes, sir. 19-73. Public Hearing With Respect to the Review of a Proposal Received for the Construction of New City Hall and Public Safety Facilities and the Possible Redevelopment of Certain City Properties. The proposal, if implemented in whole or in part, may result in the conveyance by the City of Rural Property Interest, Fee, or Leasehold in one or more of the following properties: 200 County Street, 801 Crawford Street, 801 Water Street, 206 High Street, 3701 Willett Drive, and/or other city-owned properties.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As a matter of background, at its retreat in February 2018, City Council unanimously made the decision to move government off the waterfront, all the government facilities. And that was consistent with longstanding downtown plans, most notably the plan that was adopted by the city in February 2006, which we have been following closely as we do the various improvements in the downtown area. In the spring of 2018, the city received an unsolicited proposal, unsolicited, and the city manager at the council meeting on May 22nd, 2018, announced, and they televised public meeting, that the city had received an unsolicited proposal from Amada Hoffler to build a new city hall and public safety building for the city. That started a process under the state code in which we had to advertise to allow anybody, any other interested parties, the opportunity to submit a proposal. We advertised and kept the period open during that advertisement, and in the final analysis, we only got one proposal. In November of last year, we directed the city manager and her staff to analyze the unsolicited proposal. And based on that analysis, the city manager and her team is recommending that we take the next step, and that is to sign a memorandum of understanding with the proposed developer. And that is the first step in the process that hopefully would lead to a development agreement which would encompass the scope of the project, the scale of the project, the timelines for the project, the investment of the project, the duties of both parties, et cetera. But this is the first step to set in motion the negotiations of that development agreement. Once that development agreement is made, we'll have another public hearing on that development agreement whenever it's done so that we can get citizens' input in that process. So with that background, Dr. Patton or Mr. Ashby, do you want to add anything?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, may I just simply state that, as you have said, this is that first opportunity in terms of moving forward. The initial proposal has been made public. Upon completion of the MOU, negotiations will move forward, and the city will continue to endeavor to bring about the best project we can in terms of moving forward and bringing a proposal back for council's approval.
Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as the mayor indicated, the city has been working on the Crawford Gateway revitalization since 2006. The work that is being done downtown with the public utilities and the upgrading of our public utility system all ties into the future of what will be developed in the downtown area. This has been long awaited, but staff that have come before me and staff that are now working with me are continuing to follow a plan that was adopted by City Council with a vision of what they endeavored for City of Portsmouth to become.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, this is a public hearing. And once I open the public hearing, I'll call those persons who have signed up. After those persons who have signed up speak, I'll invite anybody that's here to come to the lectern and give us your input. With that, I open the public hearing, and our first speaker that signed up to speak is Donna Catell. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. I'm a little shy and quiet, so if you can't hear me, let me know. I was watching the business meeting today on TV, and it just seemed like everything was kind of like secretive, and it made me nervous, maybe reminded me of the Elizabeth River crossings thing. And I hate to get into a private city, you know, private public initiative and be stuck like we are with the Elizabeth City Crossing and the tunnels. So please be careful what we sign and just -- and thank you for your time, and just look very closely at the final decisions that you make, and don't get us in a mess.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Our next speaker has flipped the page, and sir, you have five minutes.
A number of years ago, I came before the council and advised the council, having been a charter member of the Design Review Committee in this city, the D1 Committee, that those committees that dealt with properties and public places were there as a buffer between the council and the people, as experts in the field, to make decisions about urban planning and about individual issues, about signage, and the various things that came before them. That committee and the architectural review committees were formed for two basic reasons. Number one, the city wanted money from the federal government under 36 CFR 800.5 of the federal code, and they had to have compliance with that. And they had to comply with 15.22306 of the state code, which authorizes these committees. Now, that committee, I resigned from it after five years because of corruption, and came before the council and resigned from that committee publicly and said I would not be on a committee that was corrupt. And the council removed three of the public officials, planning and engineering, economic development, and redevelopment authority, members who were on that board, because the manager had directed them how to vote. They subsequently appointed individuals to those committees, but put realtors in there who had a great conflict of interest. who had a great conflict of interest. This was wrong. Now, it's my recollection that either the Supreme Court or the circuit courts advised this city and other cities in the state against having retreats, because you have a freedom of information that you are required to go before the people and speak to issues except where there are monetary matters, where you can go behind closed doors. Now, I think it's wrong for you to even meet in closed session, in a work session, and that you should do everything before the people. Now, here you want to sign off on a memorandum of understanding between Armada Hoffler. Now, they've built a lot of stuff in this area. They're very good architects, and they have very good roots in Portsmouth. I have no problem with Armada Hoffler. But I do have a problem with the direction this city is taking in this matter, because I feel that what you should do is set the vision of where you want to go if you want to move the most important building in this city right now, the city hall. And to many people, you're dealing with Willet Hall. These are two issues which are parallel in people's minds as very hot items, and you have not conferred with the people. You've conferred with staff, and I'm not happy with a lot of things that staff does. I saw what staff did and redevelopment did on the committees. They did what they wanted to do. Now, this is what I think. The council is the people's council. We are a republican form of government, but a lot of people feel disenfranchised, and you hear all the time, "What are they doing downtown?" I would rather see, "What are we doing in the city?" And I have long said that we should move our city hall to Frederick Boulevard, put it on the old Jeffrey Wilson property down by the Breakshoe Factory, put it in the center of the city where everybody can get to it and everybody can feel like this is our city hall, and make it something like Greek Revival, make it something that's going to last forever and it takes us back to our democratic model of what we're about. That's important. And I think that Willet Hall, to put part of this city hall down there, part of it up here, you can't even pay for the Willet Hall to maintain it, and now you want to demolish it? This is one of the most important things in this city. This area, to me, if you look at Europe and how it's developed in Cannes, and Marseille, and Naples, and Istanbul, the waterfront is a park. You don't build on the park. That's the people's area. And when they see this city from the other side of the river, are we going to mimic them? Why not be our own selves? Why not look like a suburban place that those guys in the high rises can look over at us and say, "That's a place we'd like to live. That's where we want to send our kids to school. That's a place that we'd like to retire." That's what I think that this city should do. I have not seen anything in the model that's been produced that doesn't look like cookie cutter. It is not something that would pass a design review scrutiny, and I can tell you, Ambassador Landin down here, I grilled them, and they finally came up with something that was half-baked. This is what a design review committee could do, and the councils over the years have removed the public's say-so in these committees. They need to put it back in their hands, because those people have the expertise, and you should allow the public, not just in a hearing like this, but there should be a lot of say-so in the urban plan of this city, the long-term direction we're going. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, no clapping, please. Please, we have to main order. Our next speaker is Steve Carroll, and, sir, you've got five minutes.
Steve Carroll, three one one two Riverix Drive. Let me apologize in advance, I am considerably under the weather tonight. I was watching the work session last night, and I was taken aback considerably by the city attorney's unease at proceeding with this. I got the impression that you were getting ahead of your skis. That was my first concern. A point, I served on a courts panel about eight or ten years ago. One of the things that we wanted to do was to eventually see the court complex removed from the waterfront, so this area could be developed in a gradual fashion. It wasn't done gradually. But one of the things that sold me and a number of other people on the panel was to clear the waterfront. It seems counterproductive to put city resources or city services right across the street. At the time, we considered the fact that apartments were going to go up there or some kind of private development. If you're building it across the street, you're still building it on this waterfront. That is totally counterproductive. One of the reasons we chose the site over at the Courthouse Complex now, or the Antalo Site, as some people call it, is that you had a huge land space over there, and you already had six hundred parking spaces there that are certainly not being utilized by the courts. Those city services should go there. We already own the land, I think. I'm not even sure. I keep hearing stories about that. But the intention was to get city services off the waterfront. It needs to go and consolidate, which my next question is, the end of this statement and/or other city properties, does this proposal include the jail? Does it include the jail? And if you're going to move the jail, where is it going to go? The regional jail can't take our capacity right now. It would have to be modified. One of the considerations of the Antalo Site was to put the jail next to the courthouse, and that we would build a new jail eventually. Next concern, I was opposed to a sixty million dollar school. Now we're talking about putting a school on a Willet Site or another public safety building on a Willet Site. Which is it going to be, a school or a public safety building? A lot of unanswered questions here. We're asked to come in and give you input on a public hearing that we have very little information on. Now, this was an unsolicited bid. Has the city made solicitations to other groups? I know this is considered an unsolicited bid, but it seems very foolhardy to enter into a memorandum of understanding with one game in town. There should be other players invited to the table so that we get the best deal for our money, and this is not the way to do it. That's not saying anything bad about Dan Hoffler's group, but when you're playing with our money, we need to make sure we're getting the biggest bang for our buck, and playing with one partner at the table doesn't get it done. My next concern is this going to involve money being taken from the cash reserve. Are we looking at that possibility? We have a huge debt sitting over our head right now. I was always opposed to a sixty million dollar school. I have other concerns that tonight doesn't present the opportunity, excuse me, doesn't present the opportunity to discuss, but I think we have a lot of unanswered questions that the public needs to be apprised of, and that needs to be done before you enter into a memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Donna Si, and, ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Resolution nineteen dash seventy-three is a call for the people to advise the City Council on whether or not we, the people, want to give our consent to the elected so they can transfer ownership of the people's property at Two Hundred County Street, Eight Oh One Crawford Street, Eight Oh One Water Street, Two Oh Six High Street, Thirty Seven Oh One Willet Drive, and any other of the people's property that they may decide on without our knowledge. To prevent this type of action from happening again, the elected needs to update the organizational chart so that all the departments are connected with each other in some way. Right now, these departments are located in silos where there are no lines of communication among them, nor lines of communication with the boards and commissions they advise. For example, look at the city's organizational chart. How did the Downtown Design Committee advise the Planning Department regarding someone's idea of demolishing the waterfront? The Downtown Design Committee's mission statement is to preserve the character of the downtown design districts via promoting the preservation and restoration of existing structures and promoting new structures that complement the character of the downtown design districts. Definitely, the committee's expertise needed to have been a part of someone's plan. I don't even know who started this plan to destroy the waterfront. Was the Downtown Design Committee a part of the planning of the municipal facilities assessment before the work session was held on January the twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen? There was no documentation that gave the engineer approval to do this assessment. Was the Downtown Design Committee a part of the meeting held at City Hall on February the fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen? How were the elected engaged with the people from District One in planning this strategy? See all the civic leagues and the voting precincts in District One? Looking at the newspaper article this morning in the Virginian Pilot, Armada Hoffler wants to build two hundred apartments on our official Coast Guard city waterfront. The article goes on to say that the developer was not mentioned, Armada Hoffler, or the proposed two hundred apartments, nor was there information to tell the people where to find the details on the city's website. The article goes on to report that the November twenty-seventh resolution, which was eighteen dash four four seven, we all know what happened that night when a citizen tried to oppose it. In closing, we, the people, oppose this transfer of property to a developer. We, the people, oppose destroying our assets that are of historical significance. We, the people, didn't even get adequate information of any kind from the finance director for this capital improvement plan that would have given the people moral and spiritual instruction. We, the people, oppose nineteen dash seventy-three.
Thank you, ma'am. Our last speaker that has signed up in advance of this public hearing is Mark Adogu-Yotrosky, and, sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. When we moved our courts to Port Center, we left some business unfinished. The Civic Center complex still accommodates the jail, and to my thinking, just as when I load up the family car to go on vacation, I put the biggest piece of luggage in the trunk first and then arranged the smaller pieces around it. To me, in clearing the waterfront of civic infrastructure, the jail needs to be relocated or the prison population, the jail population, needs to be accommodated in some fashion before we start clearing off this particular space. The cost of replacing the existing jail, whether it's through a freestanding structure located somewhere in the city or through expansion of the regional jail, is going to be tremendously expensive. If we enter into a contract to relocate this building and the public safety building, the occupants of these two buildings elsewhere, I believe that we will impair our ability to fund the jail relocation. We are not in a position at this point in time, with revenues creeping up but not advancing even fast enough or far enough to give our employees annual raises. So to take on more debt service in the four to five million dollar a year range just for these two buildings, and probably as much, probably five million dollars a year to relocate the jail, just doesn't make sense. There is no alternative use for this space that's going to generate anywhere near the revenue to pay that debt service. By my calculations, it takes a property, an enterprise assessed at seventy-seven million dollars, to produce one million dollars in revenue to the city through our property taxes. We're not going to be able to replicate that five and ten times over in the current climate, in the current environment. So it's nice that people pay attention to what the council says about its vision statements. It's nice that we have people proposing ways to fulfill what council has laid out as a future direction, but we cannot let outsiders drive our priorities. The jail has to be priority one. We need to decide what we're going to do, and we need to come up with a funding plan to accommodate that decision before we start moving these buildings and their occupants. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our speakers who have signed up prior to the start of this meeting. We'll now take any speaker who wants to speak on this matter. Please come to the lectern, state your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, city attorney, and city manager.
And good evening, citizens of Portsmouth.
I come before you this evening with great concern. In reviewing the development plan for the waterfront, there is an omission of what happens to our local city jail. The great concern I have is, and with me tonight are a few of the great employees we have, men and women, that have been with this department for many, many years. This is the face of our department. They do wonderful things in our community, they do wonderful things in our courts and our jails and civic leagues. They will be tremendously affected if the jail, because we can only assume, since we weren't included in that developmental plan, we can only assume that the plan is to shut down the jail. Over one hundred and thirty of our employees will be affected. They will lose their jobs. And it's hard for me to imagine that a city that's trying to move forward to risk employment of great citizens that we have in this city. To me, to value real estate, whether that's apartment complexes, rental spaces, or parking garages, to me, that doesn't equate to the livelihood, because we're only looking at one individual when you look at each of these deputies, and civilians. We have civilians every night as well. It impacts an entire family. So it's multiplied, in most cases, two or three times to one individual that we talk about as far as the deputy or the civilian employee. So it's really difficult for me to understand, how can you place a value over property, over the livelihood of people that have been dedicated to this city for many, many, many years? And we've done a lot of great things just in the last thirteen, fourteen months. We're moving forward. And the flip side of that, other than affecting the livelihood of many, many employees, the services that these employees, along with our work release inmates, provide to this city, because this is a cash-strapped city, we offer a lot of services to our seniors and our disadvantaged and our disabled citizens of this city. A prime example, we entered a partnership in recent months with the Rotary Clubs throughout the city, where they supply materials and we supply the workmanship to build ramps for the handicapped at no cost to that citizen. It's well documented over the years that we cut grass, but we do a lot more than just cut grass for people who own fixed incomes. The other programs that we started, like the DARE program in the school that mentors to kids, real important at an early age, that program will go away if we lose our jail, because our number of employees is controlled by the Workman Compensation Board out of Richmond. That program will go away. Another great thing that's provided for this city are auxiliary police detectives, deputies, I'm sorry. They work free. We're now up to twenty-seven auxiliary deputies. They patrol the streets of this city and all the working districts to help out, to help combat crime, to work hand-in-hand with the Portsmouth Police Department. They have made a great stride in this city, especially during the holiday, but they aren't just visible during the holiday time. They are every day, every evening, every weekend. They are on all the special occasions, like the fireworks, the Fourth of July, everything. So all those type of programs will go away. So it is really, really important, and a case study that I encourage you all to do is look at what happened to the city of Petersburg when- of Petersburg when City Council voted to close their jail five years ago. Five years ago, their deputy population went from 78 to 17. It has completely devastated that sheriff's department, but now, five years removed from that, they realize they made a serious mistake by closing that jail. They paid double the price to house their inmates in Riverside Regional Jail. And Riverside Regional Jail has some of the same issues that we have with our regional jail here in Portsmouth, and that's the other part of it. I can't in good conscience send inmates to a jail that has been deemed unsafe for civil rights violations to inmates. My responsibility as a sheriff of this city of Portsmouth is not to be concerned about what crimes people are locked up for, but to make sure that when they arrive in our care, they leave in our care the same way they came in. And oftentimes with the programs we have, they actually leave in better shape than what they were when they came in. So I encourage you to have that discussion with me, because I've only talked to a few City Council Members, and to sit down and have to read about it in the paper, see on the news what the plan is, is very, very disheartening. I'm easy to get along with, I'm easy to communicate with, but to go to, in an underhanded method, to talk about moving the jail, not moving it, closing it, when we can really be more beneficial to relocate. Now, I'm for it leaving the waterfront.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, our rules require you to maintain order, and we'll have to clear the council chamber in order to keep order. We'll do that. Our next, I invite the next speaker to come forward, and sir, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address.
Hold on a sec. Hello, sir.
Sheriff Moore.
Turn your button on.
Sheriff Moore, could you come back up front, please? I just wanted to say, sir, on behalf of the Churchland Rotary Club and our ramp-up program where we provide ramps to disabled seniors and needy seniors in our community, I want to thank you and your team for making yourselves available and helping to build those ramps and giving those seniors hope and those disabled folks hope. Thank you.
You are more than welcome, and my theory about the sheriff's department is, we just want to move forward as a family, as a united family, and work together to make this city the best city that it can possibly be. But thank you.
Thank you all. Remember, this is a public hearing on the issue that's before us, which is this resolution. Sir, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening. My name is Lorenzo Waters. My address is 811 Hancock Avenue, Portsmouth, Virginia. I just have one question to ask, and I would like an answer for this question. The question is, why there was not a public... My question is, why there was not a public bid for this project? And I would like to know if I could have that question answered. If not from the council tonight, can someone answer that question for me?
After you finish speaking, sir, I'll ask the city manager to explain the bid process that took place per the state code.
Okay, but the question was, why there was not a public bid for this project?
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please come to the lectern. You have five minutes. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Can you move to the microphone, ma'am? And state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Pamela Wilkins. I'm from the Westbury neighborhood. And good evening to Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. While I'm up here, I agree with a lot of things everybody have said, particularly about the jail and the employees that may lose their jobs if the jail is shut down. My thing is, I just want to know, do the council consider the employees in Portsmouth? I used to work for Portsmouth, and I get the feel that the employees are always overlooked. Now, if the jail closes, all of these people will be without a job. And a lot of the agencies, such as Social Service and different places, are short of staff. Staff are leaving, going to other cities for more money. It's almost like the city of Portsmouth do not care about its citizens or its employees. I mean, that's the way I feel from things I've seen, things that have happened, things council have voted on. It's almost like we are just here to pay our taxes and give our money, and we get nothing back in return. You know, we were pacified when I used to work for Portsmouth with a little bonus. That adds nothing to your retirement. That's a one-time thing. You know, are we a city that care? Or are we more focused on what we can get and what organization, what developer we can help increase his income? Are we concerned about the citizens of Portsmouth? I used to love Portsmouth, and I still live in Portsmouth, but if I wasn't buying a house in here, I would be considering another community, if that may come to effect one day. But my question is, are you all concerned about the citizens of Portsmouth and especially the employees? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Please state your name and your address, and sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Paul Bell. I'm at 3829 Long Point Boulevard in Portsmouth. In my capacity in serving this city, I am currently the Director of the Medical Department for the Portsmouth City Jail. There's no way possible that I can match the thunder and the impact of my boss that stood up here a few moments ago, but I'm going to offer something to you, I hope, in a different perspective. I have 25 staff members. Each one of those staff members has rent and/or mortgage. They have a car payment. They pay utility bills. They pay taxes, and I know y'all are sick to death of hearing that, but the reality is, is that is part of what we do as citizens. We have obligations that we provide to the city and to the city jail and to the inmates. I stand here, and I will answer to anyone, eye to eye, that I have the most dedicated, skilled, caring, and passionate and compassionate staff that's ever walked the face of this planet. And they choose to do it here in the city of Portsmouth, where they are woefully underpaid, not because it's the only job they can get, far contrary. These are, every single one of my providers are licensed. I have a physician. I have a board-certified physician. I have a board-certified psychiatrist. I have a licensed mental health professional. I have 18 licensed practical nurses, three registered nurses. Even my administrative assistant is certified. And it's because we care about the people put in our charge. Do things happen? Absolutely. I'll ask you, one of the safest places in the entire, supposedly in the entire United States, is supposed to be in a hospital. Ask Mary if you the last time somebody died. The reality is, life and death is part of life, but we strive to make every moment of it as much as we possibly can. And we do that to emulate our sheriff, and we do that to emulate our city and those of you that represent it. I ask you to consider, not only those jobs, but I ask you to consider the dedication that those people have shown over the years. I have two licensed practical nurses that have worked in this jail for over 23 years. Each, they could go right across the water and increase their salary by $10,000 a year, easily. So I ask you to consider that. Consider the people that, every single day, keep in mind, our jail is open seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Do you think we all bring in bologna sandwiches? Every single person in that jail, at some point in time, every single one of them, order food and services from other businesses in the city of Portsmouth? Where do you think we're going to go? If I'm having to go somewhere else to work, that money doesn't stay inside of Portsmouth. I want to ask you to consider the facts and not, I want you to consider the facts of living in Portsmouth and not the politics of living in Portsmouth. We love our city. We love what you do. That's why we voted for you. I will tell you something else, that every single one of you, that's not true, every single one of you that is actually sitting on the board, I have personally put myself in harm's way to protect each one of you. I'm one of those individuals that volunteers as a proud Portsmouth auxiliary deputy, and I do it above and beyond my paid job. I appreciate the time, and I'm asking you to please consider...
Sir, your time is up.
... what we talked about tonight. Thank you.
Please sit down. Apparently, there's a misconception. This public hearing is about the memorandum of understanding to move City Hall and the Public Safety Building. It's not a public hearing on the jail. It's not a public hearing on the future of the jail. It's not a public hearing on the closing of the jail. This is a public hearing on the proposal to move City Hall and the Public Safety Building, which is located right next door, 801. The second thing, as I indicated in my comments before the start of the public hearing, state code required us to have, to use the vernacular, a public bid. We advertised that. The city manager made notice the night that she announced that she had gotten this proposal on the 22nd of May, 2018. A notice appeared in the Virginian Pilot the very next day, and so we did have a bid process. I invite you to come to the lectern and speak to the issue. We respect everybody that's spoken, but this is not a public hearing on the jail. Next speaker, please. Next speaker. You may come and speak on the matter. You don't have to be signed up. Hearing or seeing no other speakers, declare this public hearing closed. Councilwoman Simmons is asked for the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Rowan. I appreciate your comments to the point of this public hearing, and I think it's also important to understand that this is a, this is the process that the state requires. It is very specific on the way things have to be publicized, the type of public hearing we have, the way the information is put out. But this is a non-binding memorandum of understanding to allow the city manager and her staff to proceed into negotiations. If at such time those proceedings go well, and there is an agreement that one would like to come to, that has to come back to this body to, again, another public hearing for conversation. There has been no determination of any kind to build one inch of a building on any particular location for any particular purpose, which is why what you read is so nebulous in notating a couple of addresses and then saying other such city properties. There has been no decision made. This is to start the conversation, not to end it. So I just want to be clear that even though the Virginian Pilot may put a picture in the paper and put an address, I can assure you that a lot of what was in the newspaper was just flat-out wrong. So I just want to be sure everybody understands that.
Thank you, ma'am, and we'll discuss this more when it comes up before us for consideration later on the agenda. Madam Clerk, the next item?
Yes, sir. Item 1974, invitation for bids for a wireless facilities franchise.
And is this in accordance with the state law? Was public notice given?
Yes, sir. Public notice was given, and item 1974 is the receipt of bids pursuant to an invitation for bids for a wireless facilities franchise. In accordance with state law, public notice was placed in the local press by the city clerk's office to accept bids for non-exclusive wireless facilities franchise agreements. The agreement will have a term of 10 years with up to three renewal terms of five years each, and will allow for the replacement of wireless facilities within the city's right-of-way.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. How many bids were received?
One bid has been received.
Please read that bid and mark it for identification, please.
Yes, sir. February 11, 2019, Portsmouth, Virginia, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC bid for wireless facilities franchise. Please consider this correspondence as formal request to submit a bid for wireless facilities franchise with the city of Portsmouth, Virginia. New Singular Wireless PCS LLC seeks access to rights of way for the installation of facilities used and the provision of communication services. New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, is an indirectly wholly owned entity of AT&amp;T Incorporated. Contracts executed for New Circular Wireless PCS LLC are made by its manager, AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation. On behalf of these entities, I acknowledge that the terms of the above referenced franchise agreement have been agreed upon. If you have any questions regarding this letter, please contact my office. For New Singular Wireless is signed by Kristy Roper, Senior Manager, Real Estate and Construction.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and again, please mark that for identification. And you said earlier that we've only received one bid?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to address the public. Are there any other bids? Are there any other bids? Hearing none? If there are no additional bids, I declare this bidding process closed. Now, we'll have a public hearing on the one bid that we've received. Do you have any additional information that I need to know? All right. This is a public hearing on the bid that we received, and Madam Clerk, will you read
Adoption of an ordinance accepting the bid submitted by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for a non-exclusive wireless franchise agreement having a term of 10 years with up to three renewal terms of five years, each authorizing the placement of wireless facilities within the city's public ways.
I state again, this is a public hearing on the consideration, council's consideration of granting this franchise through the adoption of this ordinance. I invite, if you desire to speak, please come to the lectern, state your name, and you'll be given five minutes, and this public hearing is now open. Is there anybody that desires to speak on this matter? Please state your name, and you'll have five minutes. Name and address.
Cliff Page, 465 Primrose in Portsmouth. I just remind the council and the public... I'd just remind the council and the public about the fact that we signed a contract some years ago with Cox Cable, and councilmen were given stock in the company. We had companies that came into this city and wanted to put in riverboat gambling, and little things were given to the council. I hope that nothing like that is happening here. But one of the problems with Cox was that we gave them a perpetual deal. My brother lived out in Boulder for some time, and they did have a period of time in which the installers of the cable out there had a right to that, and they had a franchise on that. Now, I understand that this is for 10 years, renewable. In Boulder, the period of time when it elapsed, the installation became the property of the city, and they could let out another contract to anybody else, and they rebid the contract. That doesn't mean that the initial contractor couldn't bid also, but that became the property of the city. And I would advise you, and I would suggest to you, that that may be a better way of dealing with this thing, because right now, we're stuck forever with Cox Cable in this city. And you can see, I mean, I don't know whatever happened to Irving Hill over in Norfolk, but he became their public spokesman, and he was on the council in Norfolk. We need to do this really above board, but we need to think long-term about means in which the city gets controlling interest in these matters. But we also need to remember that technology changes very fast, and whether or not we want to do 10 years, or seven years, or something like that, is something to consider also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers? You're invited to speak. If you desire to, please come to the lectern and state your name and address. Any other speakers? I declare this public hearing closed. We have before us the consideration of the ordinance granting this franchise as a motion to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? We have a motion to adopt that's been duly seconded. Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion to adopt, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Lisa.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Well, she's opening back up.
All right, we're, okay, we'll have an electronic roll call on the motion which is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Close the roll, and that motion carries. Which brings us to unfinished business, item 19-53, a Use Permit. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A Resolution Granting a Use Permit, UP 1901, to MAS-EV Properties LLC to develop and operate not more than three units of multifamily housing, including one first-floor unit, at 720-722 County Street, Tax Parcel 0025-0260.
And what was the vote on the first reading?
Seven zero.
So that we can consider this matter on its second reading, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded to adopt this resolution on its second reading. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-76, under City Manager's Report. It's the consideration of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An Ordinance Accepting a Shelter Plus Care Grant in the Amount of $527,449 from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and Appropriating Set Funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for Use by the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to Provide Supportive Services to the Chronically Homeless and at-Risk Portsmouth Residents.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion to adopt, and it's been seconded. We're ready for a discussion of the motion. Ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Brings us to item 1977, Adoption of Another Ordinance, the consideration. Will you read the caption?
Yes, sir. An Ordinance Accepting Funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services in the Amount of $1,200, and Appropriating Set Amount in the FY 2019 Social Services Fund for the Family Partnership Meeting and Center Program.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-78, which is the consideration, adoption of another ordinance. Would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An Ordinance Modifying the Source of Funding in the Capital Improvement Fund Budget for the Construction of a New Waste Management Building.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-79, which is a consideration of a resolution pertaining to the public hearing that we held this evening. Would you read the caption of the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A Resolution Electing to Proceed with Negotiations with AHP Development LLC Regarding the Potential Construction of New City Hall, Parking Garage, and Public Safety Facilities, and the Redevelopment of Vacated Properties.
Thank you, ma'am. So we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for discussion, and we did have two registered speakers, Steve Carroll, who's not here, and Donna Si. Ma'am, do you have anything new to add? Please come, you'll have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Resolution 19-79 is a resolution electing to proceed with negotiations with AHP Development LLC to construct a new city hall, parking garage, and public safety facilities, and that the redevelopment of vacated properties. Resolution 19-79 started with the City Manager's Report, Resolution 18-447, which gave authority to the city staff by the city council, not by the people, and the downtown design committee to analyze the proposals received from developers to construct a new city hall and a new public safety building. 1979 resolution has no proposal to construct a new city jail that will be demolished in the process of building a new city hall and public safety building. Let's review some financial history that has caused concern for this resolution, 19-79. On Monday night, November 26, there was a briefing on capital project cleanup report given by the finance officer. She reported briefly about the errors in the capra. There are over 100 projects with expenditures not applied to the right year. More financial concerns are related to the municipal facilities assessment overview given on January 23, 2018, by the city's engineer. 801 Water Street was purchased for over $2 million. The city council took this building off the tax rolls. The real estate tax base was over $3 million a year. That means that the city took away over $40,000 of revenue from the people of the city for the last four years. Next, 801 Crawford Street and the City Hall Building. The municipal building was reported to have significant maintenance issues that will cost $7 million to fix. Does it make sense to tear City Hall down and build another one somewhere else when we can repair the issues and save money? The former civic center at 711 Crawford Street and the city jail at 701 Crawford Street will cost $8 million to demolish and $64 million to relocate the jail. It will cost less money to rebuild the civic center to fit the needs for a safety building instead of demolishing it. To revitalize the waterfront, there was an approval of $475,000 from the Capital Improvement Plan for Studies and Assessment. The staff wants to select a site for the public safety complex in City Hall. Instead of wasting taxpayers' money and time on the demolition of the waterfront, use the buildings on the waterfront for the public business affairs. And there's a list of money spent without the people's consent, and I'm not going to go through all those. So, and lastly, Portsmouth is the 12th financially stressed city in the Commonwealth. In 1979, resolution is wrong for the people. It will cause the people a great deal of suffering in the future. We, the people, do not give our consent to vote on this resolution. We can rehabilitate the civic center for a safety building, keep the jail, and fix the city hall and other buildings. We can't financially afford to destroy our historic buildings. We don't need apartments on official Coast Guard city's waterfront. And I'm speaking, and I know I haven't been heard.
Thank you very much, ma'am, for your comments. We appreciate them. We're ready for discussion on this resolution. Hearing none, ready for the question. All in favor of the motion which is to adopt the resolution, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to new business, boards and commissions, and I don't think we have a report, do we?
No, we don't, Mayor.
Items submitted by council members. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, sir. A couple of items of interest to the public tonight. I remind you all that there is AARP tax prep assistance at the Churchland Branch Library that's offered to low and moderate income taxpayers with simple returns. That is from Monday through Thursday, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., from now until April 15th, tax day. Online, for those of you that use a computer, there is a proposed budget citizen opinion poll online, and it will be online through Sunday, March 10. And if you'll go to the city's website, portsmouthva.gov, there's a link right on the front page to that budget opinion poll. We have a whole new list of events for coming up for the month of March, and they are always available at portsmouthvaevents.com. And of a lot of interest to a lot of people, in particular, a lot of older residents who have been very active on social media, I am pleased to let everyone know that the Naval Shipyard Museum at Number 2 High Street, located at the foot of High Street, is open. It is open Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday from 10:00 to 5:00 through the end of March, and then beginning on April 3, it will be open Wednesday through Saturday from 10:00 to 5:00, and on Sunday afternoons from 1:00 to 5:00. So again, the Naval Shipyard Museum at 2 High Street is open. Been a long time coming, and we're glad to have it open again. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. And the chair recognizes Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. As we bring Black History Month to a close, last meeting, I spoke to you about the Emmanuel AME Church, and today I would like to bring highlights to you from the Portsmouth Colored Community Library Museum. The Portsmouth Colored Community Library Museum is a nationally recognized historical site, and it welcomes anyone interested in learning how a small community library enriched Portsmouth from 1945 until 1963. The historic library is now Portsmouth's fifth city-operated museum, and celebrating Portsmouth African-American history, the museum's exhibitions include photographs and memorabilia, as well as African-American books and journals from the former library. Recognizing the significance of Portsmouth African-American trailblazers and organizations, the museum also salutes the historic Portsmouth African-American community. Children who visit the museum will enjoy hands-on activities, storytelling, and interactive programs designed to promote pride, cultural diversity, activism, and understanding of local African-American Portsmouth history. And in some information that we received from our city manager this month, there are a couple exhibits that may be of interest to you. One is, of course, the portraits of service Portsmouth African-Americans in the military from 1946 to 1967. Also, a selection of historical images from IC Norcom High School, and also a study, steady cycle of lively events, the African-American social scenes in the post-war Portsmouth. And one of the persons responsible for getting this museum on the national register is here with us today, May Haywood. And if you would stand, and thank you for being here with us today. Thank you. And thank you for listening. This has been another Black History Moment in Portsmouth.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. May, for being here. You've done so much for our community. Report on pending items, Dr. Patton.
Mayor, there are none.
Okay. Which brings us to non-agenda speakers, and let's review, again, the protocol for the speakers. Would you read that again, please? And then I have a question.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Attorney, if a speaker has spoken in the public hearing section of our agenda, can that person speak again as a non-agenda speaker? I don't think so. Is that correct?
Mayor, in accordance with the city council rules, that is correct. If you have elected to speak on an agenda item or a public hearing item, you do, in fact, forego the opportunity to speak as a non-agenda speaker.
Okay. So to be clear, if you have signed up as a non-agenda speaker, but you have previously spoke at this council meeting, our council rules say that you cannot speak as a non-agenda speaker. Our first speaker is Sergio O'Neill, and sir, you have five minutes. Our second speaker is Michelle Smith, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members. My name is Michelle Smith. I live in Cavill Manor. Allegiance Alma mater dear. A lot of you sincerely know what that phrase means, and I'm here today because an immediate situation has come forth, and I wanted to speak to you all. It's regards to IC Norcom, but I want to address it now. I'll communicate with Norcom also in the future. I'm here to request honestly that an investigation be conducted to determine if, and I do state if, any negative elements exist within Portsmouth Public Schools, specifically the music department. I've been approached by numerous people. Again, I'm alumni, class of '85. I'm a public citizen. I put my feet to the ground. I volunteer. And so, a lot of concern has come forth in regards to the Portsmouth Public Music Department Supervisor and Director, Gwendolyn Jenkins.
Ma'am, we don't allow personal criticism. If you're, I want to give you a heads-up on that. And so, please refrain from talking about a person in a negative way. That's not allowed under our council rules.
So even if it's been-
If your request is for council or the city to look into something, we can do that, but- but we do not allow negative comments to be made about anybody.
Okay. Well, let me try to get through it, and if I'm incorrect, of course, you're going to square me away.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, it's a situation that has come forth, and an individual has been, they resigned because of situations that occurred within, I won't use the name, Portsmouth Public Schools, and I sincerely think it needs to be addressed because it has impacted the students. Can I use the person's name who was impacted?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I guess I can't go forth with this. So what, I take it up with the school board?
That's the proper place.
Yeah. I mean, this situation immediately happened, and I don't want any consequences in the schools because negative things have been impacting the schools, and so, specifically particular students, and I wanted to address that. But I appreciate, I'll go and come so I can come to the city council office, or meet with you all, or meet with somebody so that I can appropriately detail the situation.
Sure.
Okay.
And you're welcome to speak with our city manager, but the appropriate place is the school board.
Okay. All right. I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Greg Patterson, and sir, you have five minutes. Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Craig Patterson. My corporate offices are based in Columbus, Ohio. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Dr. Patton. I'm here to give you an update on a project we came before council last year at this time, received approvals to move forward. The name of the project was Holly Point at eight eighteen County Road. That property and that development was not funded, unfortunately. We would like to go forward in the coming month to reapply. It's a new product from the standpoint that we have changed the number of units from fifty-nine units to fifty units. We have increased and broadened the income-based tenants that can live there. Half of the tenants can earn between forty-two thousand and sixty thousand a year, depending on the number of family members. But we have a dilemma. We have tried to renegotiate the purchase agreement. We have offered more money for the property. All we want is a hundred and twenty days to see if we can receive funding. We have met with the owner of the property, who we understand is the owner of the property. The Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, they have said, we understand that the city wants the property. We have met with members of this city. Mayor, we met with you. You mentioned that you didn't know of a pending transfer of the property. We have a dilemma. We think that this nine point four million investment in your downtown to bring housing, affordable workforce housing, to a multitude of workers, families, seniors, singles, is a strategic decision that should be made to the council, but we need council's help to help us determine who we go to to get the contract executed. That is my request tonight, that council would provide some direction, leadership on what we do now for the good of the downtown, future of the people.
Excuse me, are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Because you've mentioned my name, I did recommend to you that I thought that this was the wrong location, and I pointed out several different properties within less than a block away from the site, and I mentioned to you that I thought that this was not the appropriate use for that, that property. I recommend that you speak with our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Robert Moore, because there's more suitable property right within a small radius. You could walk there on the hottest day of the year, not break out a sweat, and get there in three minutes. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Patterson. I think in some communication you sent to this city council, I think you pointed out that a couple of parcels had been suggested, but I think in that communication, you also said that they did not qualify. Is that correct?
What I said was that parcels in the two locations you mentioned, Mayor, and it was, we did talk to Mr. Moore, same two parcels were pointed out. In both cases, I said, I don't think they will score. They will not be competitive. But what we did was, he did further research. They're in two different census tracts, and the difference between those census tracts is twenty-five scoring points on a VHDA application. What that means, there's no chance to get funded on the sites that we were asked to look at, but eight-one-eight county could get funded, can get funded. Last year, only seven point two points was the difference between the winners and the losers in the whole Tidewater pool, which is the pool that we compete in, against all the other developers in Norfolk, and Newport News, and Hampton, the whole Tidewater. So that's why I bring it, and that's why I wanted to clarify tonight the dilemma.
Mayor, I would like to see staff get with Mr. Patterson and see if we can work out, as you know, council approved the project, and it's, I think it's a worthwhile project, it's affordable housing, on the high end, actually, and I think the city needs that type of housing. So if there's concurrence, I would like for staff to get back with him and report back. I would think that we could find a place in this city for that type of project.
All right. Please hold that, because we have other speakers. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke?
Yes, sir. Mr. Patterson, as a member, actually liaison with the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, I know that you were under that body before when you first applied for the tax credits, and those, the first round was denied. So are you waiting to apply for the tax credits again, once you determine where you're going to be, or what is the holdup? And then, I guess my second question is, has it been transferred from PRHA to the city? Who, who has possession of it?
Well, first of all, let me answer the latter. We're not sure where it is. We think it's still, the ownership is with the PHA. Mr. Bruce Watts is here. He met with the board. He petitioned, gave the timelines. We would have to apply for credits on March the fourteenth. If we cannot apply on March the fourteenth, then it would be another full year before we could bring that investment to eight-one-eight county. We did notify, and I think, Mayor, you may have received, or maybe Dr. Patton received our notification, that was required, before we even met the mayor, was required that we notify the city that we have a proposal to put at least fifty units on eight-one-eight county. That's required by VHDA. But we had already scoured the city long before we notified, and we knew that eight-one-eight was really the only scorable option that we knew where there was zoning, and we had already gone through the multiple approvals, downtown design, and at this body last year. So we thought for the good of the city, it would be best to come back before council and say, here's where we are, here's why we couldn't score, we've looked at everything else, we would like an opportunity to go forth in the coming year.
Let me interrupt.
Thank you.
This has gotten into a agenda-type discussion, and you're a non-agenda speaker.
Yes, sir.
All right. Have you finished speaking?
I am finished.
All right. Let's get the next speaker, because I think it's related.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bruce Watts. Sir, you've got five minutes. Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I know it's been a long evening, and I'm going to make this short. All I would like to add is that, from a chronology standpoint, we had a PA with Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority. That PA, according to the executive director, he said that the city would prefer to have that property transferred to them. So they denied a new PA for us, and they said that the property was being transferred to the city. That was about six weeks ago. We then met with city representatives, including the Director of Development, and he informed us that the property was being transferred to the EDA. We, I contacted a member of the EDA and asked that member if he could put us on the agenda to discuss that PA, to see if we could get a signed PA. He informed me that he called a city attorney, and the city attorney informed him that that property technically had not been transferred to the city. And technically speaking, I guess it was in between the Housing Authority and the city. So we have been trying to get someone to work with us to sign a new PA, which we would put in three hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of the property, which is more than what we were originally going to do the first time around. And that's all we're here for, respectfully, Mayor and Vice Mayor members. We really want to do this project. We want to do it for the citizens of Portsmouth. We, we are already a part of this community. We met with several stakeholders, as you all well know, and this is a tremendous opportunity for the city, for the Water Cooper Companies, and we respectfully ask you to help us to get this PA signed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to take the rest of the speakers, and then we'll come back to discuss this. The next speaker is Sandra Allen, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Sandra Allen. I reside in Suffolk, Virginia. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, council members. I'm here tonight to implore you to follow the lead of the state legislators who have committed to show respect and value for the highly qualified, diligent, and passionate professionals who instruct, guide, and protect the children of the city of Portsmouth, the future mayors, the future council persons. By awarding the three percent raise of the five percent that was approved at the state level, Portsmouth is struggling now to attract new, highly qualified, excellent teachers. I, I know the board has, has upped salaries for new teachers, put many incentives in place. Now our problem becomes that we have become a stepping stone for teachers who come into Portsmouth, get their feet wet, and then move on. If we could give the example of showing the value that the city of Portsmouth has for education by permitting this raise to go through, we would outshine all the other cities at this point, and we could maintain, keep, the excellent teachers that we have. I've been teaching in Portsmouth for fourteen years. I've been teaching, I teach sixth grade history and reading at Simondsdale Elementary, and in those fourteen years that I've been teaching here, it's gotten harder as a teacher, and it's gotten harder as a person to survive on the income that we make. Because it's not that I can't pay my bills, the problem is, I find myself personally investing in my students. So if I'm going to continue to do that, please show me that you value and respect me as a professional, as a person with a college degree, that you will continue to support us, and consider working this raise into the oncoming budget. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Marcy McLeod. Ma'am, you've got five minutes. Please state your name and address. Marcy McLeod. That concludes our non-agenda speakers. We'll go back, we have a dilemma here, because this is non-agenda, and if we're going to take some action, I think the recommendation that I would give Mr. Patterson, Mr. Watts, is that you meet with the city manager, and she's available here, you can set up a time. Personally, I think your project is needed downtown. As I told you before, this is, in my feeling, the wrong location for it, that a better use for that property is commercial, not residential. But again, I'm just one person on city council, but I think I probably would have other comments. And so with that, I recommend that you meet with the city manager. Any further discussion? That completes our agenda. This meeting is adjourned.